Let's call our city council meeting for September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one to order, please. Roll call.
Arthur.
Here.
Larry.
Here.
Gene.
Here.
Tim. Dawn.
Amber.
Here.
And if we could please stand for pledge allegiance. Council, I hope you had time to look over tonight's agenda and I will accept the motion to approve.
I've got some trouble with tonight's agenda. I noticed, although I didn't expect to see it, that the landfill is not being voted on by council. I know we didn't get our agenda packets until four o'clock on the Friday before a long weekend, so we didn't get a chance to chat about it before now. But I'd like you to address that before we vote to approve.
You're asking me to address, sir?
Somebody.
Okay. The landfill, if you don't mind, just to step up to the plate here a little bit. This was an LSD issue, which all LSDs come before your planning commission. To my knowledge, for the last six and a half years, this council has never been a party to any LSD approval or denial. So therefore, the commission's vote was the final vote.
Okay, that may be true, but I have been led to believe by the fact that we were stressed to go visit the landfill, that you have spent hours chatting with us privately and publicly about supporting the large-scale development. I just find it a little surprising. I think even there were some planning members that voted last week thinking that it was going to go from them to us. I was in that number. Now, I understand I might have missed one, but I kind of feel like we got a fastball thrown by us.
Well, I don't feel that way because even.
Of course, you don't feel that way, but this isn't how you feel. It's how I feel. Sorry to cut you off.
Well, my apologies that you feel that way, that you don't understand the rules of the city. I mean, if you read the city ordinances, it's pretty self-explanatory.
I don't think you know the rules of the city because up until just a few weeks ago, you were pressuring us to support the landfill.
No, I don't think there's been no pressure put on me to pressure you.
I would agree. I would agree that you don't think there has been no pressure because there has been lots of pressure. There's pressure.
By asking you to attend meetings?
By all sorts of things, by telling planning commissioners they would be sued personally if they were to support something.
No, I don't think that I've ever.
We just stop recording or start recording?
I don't know.
I just don't want to miss any fun.
I don't want to be missed either, sir. I don't think there's ever been a question in my mind of whether any of us can be sued. And I think that we set up a meeting, a training session, in which I didn't invite our city attorney, among others, to come explain to your commission, as well as I feel like there needs to be more training of the council so that they understand the legitimacy of everything that they do. Now, to sit here and tell you that you're going to be sued? I can't tell you that. Only the person that's suing you can tell you that.
Well, anybody can sue me for anything, right? Whether the case has merit or not is a whole other matter.
Right.
I also didn't know. I thought that vote was going to come to council. I had no idea that that would be the final vote, not.
Did anybody on city council know that besides you knew it, Larry?
Yes.
Congratulations. I'm glad.
But he's also been to every single meeting that they've had.
Well, I tried to attend the work sessions slash training session, but apparently it wasn't online, so I'm guessing there's not a recording of that.
Couldn't tell you. Don't know. I don't.
I think you should be able to tell me that.
Well, I don't know if it's online. I haven't looked. I don't look. But I can say, back to Ms. Arbora, you've sat on this council for how long?
Year and a half.
Okay. Have you ever voted on an LSD?
Well, in a year and a half, have we had one come across the desk?
We've had zero come across the council desk.
Correct.
So that I would have no previous experience with that.
But you have voted on other things that go before your planning commission, correct?
Now, and let me also say that I feel like in previous meetings that it has been brought up or mentioned that it would go to council and it was never corrected. Well, hold on, guys. It's actually not coming to council. It's going to be.
Have you directly asked me?
I have no reason to ask. I, you know, it's been the underlying understanding that it would, based on what we voted previously, that, you know, that would come to council, our previous vote, that.
Based on what you voted previously, which has never been an LSD, right?
That is correct. Right. But I have no previous experience to know that LSD was not included in that. I thought that it would be all things. So it would have been nice to know that on the front end. This whole time I was under the impression that we'd be voting on it. So that's just, that's just me. I'm just agreeing with.
And I tell you what my fatal error in this, and this happened a few weeks ago, is because I was asked by others, what is the process? Now, nor you or Mr. Burris has ever come to me and asked me directly, which that's fine. So I have to assume that you must know, correct? But, but now hear me out. Let me finish.
There's a lot of training going on. It's interesting. We weren't trained on that.
Well, I apologize if you don't pay attention, sir.
I don't think that's me not paying attention.
Well, I think it is.
And I don't think you're really sorry.
Well, I am sorry that you don't know.
Okay.
Because what I have responded to folks is where I was incorrect was I have said that I thought that this could be appealed.
Wait, Rocky's here to save the day. It's here, Rocky.
So were you in attendance at the workshop?
I tried to attend the workshop. I had a bad cold that night and didn't want to come infect everybody, but I tried to watch it online. And apparently it was not online.
I would like to address your comment.
Why was that not online, Rocky?
It doesn't have to be online.
Because anything that we can say in secret, we don't have to announce.
That was announced ahead of time.
How is it said in secret?
I think anything that you say that isn't in the light of day is secretive.
It wasn't a secret. There were citizens here. They chose to attend.
Sure.
Okay, you could have chose to attend as well.
Should I have attended, Rocky?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll remember.
There was nothing done in secret.
Okay.
And to your statement that the planning commissioners did not know that it would not go to city council, I can tell you I addressed that with every one of them.
I don't believe you.
Five weeks ago.
I don't believe you.
And a week ago.
I don't believe you.
Would you tell him?
Penny, did you know? Okay, there's one. Is Josh here?
I'll tell you before the meeting.
Kevin?
That it would not go to.
Kevin knew.
I'm sorry. I'm talking.
Well, I'm sorry. Did anybody let Rocky talk or he stepped in?
Did you learn before the meeting that it would not go to?
Did you give him the floor?
I gave him the floor.
Didn't catch it.
You sat right by me and I told you. I'm sorry. So that was addressed at the workshop five weeks ago at the planning meeting and last week.
What was that, Mrs. Calcagni?
Mr. Burris, you're not running the council chamber. Please hold your tongue.
My apologies, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Agman.
Counsel in your packet is a memo that I prepared that addresses the question.
Sit down for a second.
That addresses the, this very question. There is some confusion here, I think, because you had several things going on at the same time, along with the large-scale development, which was going through the planning commission. You also had a CUP for the commercial side that was going on. That was earlier. That did come because the conditional use permits do come before, do come before the council. But in the memo, it's pretty clear in state law that planning commission is the final administrative approval for Platts. So that would be preliminary Platte, large-scale, final Platte, incidental subdivisions. So a Platte. Part of the confusion too, I think, was there is a legacy provision in your subdivision code from, I want to say two thousand and nine and maybe two thousand and twelve. Can't remember off the top of my head, that has an appeal section in your subdivision code. I went back and looked at the original ordinance when that was passed because if you read the appeal section, it doesn't make a lot of sense. There's some, something grammatically going on with that particular provision. That doesn't make sense. But it was strange to me to see an appeal provision when this issue came up about whether there could even be an appeal. So I looked at it, consulted state law and determined that even if, you know, let's say there was a denial of the, of the large-scale development, that the applicant could not appeal that to city council. They would have to go to circuit court. So that's what that memo lays out. I do think there was a little bit of confusion about whether or not there could be an appeal because there is that kind of broken appeal provision in the subdivision code. But as far as it being a final administrative authority, it is with the planning commission and that is set in state law in, you know, quite clearly. And I think the Arkansas Supreme Court has also set forth that it's the final administrative body for approval of Platts. So I drew that up last week to make sure that that was clear and also point out that we probably need to, in the future, address that appeal provision in the subdivision code. I think it could potentially apply to waivers, but it can apply to Platts because appeal of a Platte would have to go to circuit court.
Thank you, sir.
So, Mr. Agman, you're referring to the, to the memorandum and the agenda packet dated September second?
Yes.
Okay. And the vote on this was, what, August thirty-first?
Okay, we talked about it in the, in the workshop that we had on the, on the training side. And then after talking with it at the workshop, I put it down into memo.
Well, I appreciate that. It would have been good to have known that beforehand. Obviously, Mayor, you're correct that my ignorance of the laws is not an excuse. Here's what I'm afraid of, and I could be wrong, but your actions up to now had led me to believe, and I suspect others on this council and others in the commission, that it would come to the council. And by the way, I have no doubt that it would have passed through this council. I don't know that you have that same assurance that I have, but I feel that you tried to find a way to sneak. And just because it's legal and there's a legal way around it, doesn't mean it's ethical or that it's all out in the sunlight. So I think, I should say, I feel that it's another one of those opportunities where you've tried to skirt something that probably would have been just fine without that, that extra thought.
Well, it's, it's really curious to me, you know, because I hear this from both sides, that I'm on one side or I'm on the other. And it's amazing to me that we've had, we did not have the opportunity to have any enforcement at all with the landfill. Up until the time I became mayor, the landfill zoning was manufactured housing with no regulation. Since that time, our staff has worked diligently to produce legislation to, I think, help the citizens in the city. We've also listened to the citizens, I feel like, and addressed many other concerns with what we were capable of doing. And we're added to the conditions. So if that is working for the landfill, then you can take it for what it is. Because I think that if anybody should have a complaint against what I have done, it possibly should be the landfill. Because I think I'm only mayor in the last twenty-five years that's offered to do anything to cost them money, to make them perform. Because as stated on several occasions in this hall, is the landfill has offered excuse after excuse, promise after promise, and has never been held accountable up until this last week. That now everything is in stone, everything is in writing, and these aren't not promises. They're legitimate documents that will force them to perform.
I hope you're right.
Well, I hope so, too. I hope for all parties, not just the landfill. Because I had a conversation with one of the citizens this past week, and it was really interesting to me that their comments to me was, you need to represent the citizens. You need to talk for the citizens, when I really feel like that I have talked on behalf of the citizens and we even have further proof, proof down here in our agenda tonight of some other actions that I think are going to offer assistance to them. But what was fascinating to me was, is that my comment back to them was, I don't just represent the citizens of Tonny Town. I present the citizens of Tonny Town. I also represent the business owners that are inside of Tonny Town to try to do everything that I can possibly do for them, as well as citizens of Tonny Town. And you know, sometimes I get caught way off out in the weeds doing more than my job requires. And that's okay because that's who I am. And Mr. Burris, you know, it's not the first time that you've made the accusation of me sneaking around.
I don't think it'll be the last either.
It probably won't because I am really curious of your intentions. Because it sure feels like that there's more on the table and more in this particular game to benefit you, Mr. Burris, than I.
What do you think?
I would assume because your land backs up to it, but that's okay. So I digress.
My land, my land comes close and I don't like it.
You can thank what you want to, sir. But you were invited out to the landfill as is, as was everybody at this table, as well as me, to go anytime and every time so that you would be knowledgeable of it, so that you could speak of it.
Right. And you have no idea how I would vote on that particular issue, although I know you think.
Listen to me. I don't care how any of y'all voted. It is not my responsibility to dictate how you vote, nor is it my responsibility to dictate how the planning commission should vote. That is not my concern.
Okay, then let's take those one by one. When it comes to not caring how we vote, you sure spend an awful lot of time trying to encourage us to go in one direction or another. May I, may I, sir, I have the floor, I believe. May I point out, as recently as two weeks ago, that one of our council members was cajoled one way or another into bringing back something we'd already voted on. There's number one. Number two, the entire planning commission was set straight at the workshop slash training session to let them know what they should or should not do. So if we have a planning commission chaired by Rocky Clinton, I'd like to, to figure out a way to disband the commission because if the point is that the commission simply needs to look at the code and decide whether or not that's, something fits it, we are paying Garver a whole lot of money. We've got a new planning official who we're paying a whole lot of money. And now we have six members of a planning commission who apparently their job is nothing more than to be a bobblehead to do whatever it is that you and Rocky tell them to say.
Well, and that is truly your opinion. And you have every right to have that opinion, but I also would tell you that there, what I've tried to explain is there are roles and duties among me, the council and the commission. And the training session that they had was hopefully to let them better understand what their role is and how they're voting on things and what their job is to do. And I think you heard me several times at the mic up there say to everybody that their job on that commission on that particular night was to be the backup eyes of Courtney McNair and our planner, that if there was anything that was missed with inside the administrative staff, then they need to notify them of that, that there's something else that needs to be added. Not a single soul in the commission added a single thing that was within our laws that needed to be added. So, you know, I disagree with you in a statement that you think that they need to be disbanded because they didn't vote in the way that Mr. Burris wanted to vote.
That's not my point.
I think that is your point.
No, my point is that as they were told, their job is to simply look at the code and determine whether or not.
It is.
And then determine whether or not something meets that code. If that's true, I'm not picking on anybody for any way that they vote. But if the truth is, you look at the code and you look at the application, and if one fits the other, we say yes. Why do we need six bobbleheads to say yes? We need a computer and a city official who can say, here's an application.
Well, then, sir, I think that your argument should be taken up with the state because everything that we do in this town is by the law of the state.
Right. But our chairman has told me that that commission can be as large or as small as we want it to be. So let's have Rocky Clinton be the one who gives it the rubber stamp. We don't need six rubber stamps, do we?
And that is purely your choice. It's your prerogative. If that's what you want to do, is limit your commission down to a certain size, I'm assuming that they can. I don't know. Or they can increase it in size if they so choose.
My point is I just don't know why we need six people to rubber stamp when one will do.
I disagree.
What, what do you disagree with?
That you would only have one opinion at that time.
But, but you told me and you told them, it's not about their opinion. It's about looking at the application.
Exactly. And they may read something differently than I read, or you may read something differently than they read, is my point. That is why there is a body that is set before us to review, Mr. Agman.
Well, I think it's assuming that all the planning commission does is review Platts. Can they do more than that? And the code sets forth what they do and they develop, they develop the plans, the comprehensive plan, the land use plan, the master street plan, the, the vision and growth plan of, of the city. Then they apply that. They also are the, the body that recommends ordinance changes to, for the zoning ordinance to the city council. That's one of their powers as well. And then, of course, they have a recommendation vote with regard to rezonings and with regard to conditional use permits, where more of that discretion, that application of that plan comes into, into being. The state law covers what the scope of a planning commission is. Part of that is Platte approval. But part, a big part of that, an important part of that is development of the plans for the city and the application of those plans through the code and also through rezoning ordinance, rezoning recommendations. So there, there are several different roles here. They're also, they conduct the public hearings for changes to the code, to changes to the plan for, for rezoning. So there is an autonomy there. And by the way, if you're a city of the first class, you do planning, you have to have a planning commission. So you don't have a choice.
But, but how many people must be on that commission?
It has, it has a minimum in the law. I'd have to look at it again. I haven't had that question before, but I don't know if it's three. I'd have to, I'd have to take a look.
I'd love to know that answer.
I think it, I think it's, it's, it's not accurate to say that it's just a rubber stamp because what they're, on the Platte side, they don't, they do not have the discretion. They are applying the, the code to the Platte and see if it meets, meets the minimum code. That's state law. That's what they, that's what they do. But in the course of that work, they develop a, hey, we discussed this quite a bit in the, in the work session. They gain a knowledge of what the code is and what it isn't, and maybe what it should be. And had this one particular question of, from a commissioner about what you do in the case of, you know, you get, I think you mentioned a dozen seven brews all along a stretch of a highway. And we were kind of talking through those type of questions. And I mentioned that one of the more important roles for them too is, is they're on the, I mean, they're doing the, the oversight, the review for these Platts. They, they tend to see the problems. And if they know that a drive-through coffee place tends to back up coffee onto, onto the highway, they can suggest changes to our subdivision code in the large-scale development section that would say, hey, we need more stacking. We need to move the drive-throughs to a different location. We need to make sure that the curb cut is such as that, that, you know, wouldn't back up into the street. You know, they can do those and that's part of their role. And I think that's where it becomes a very healthy thing is when they're seeing the application of the code, even though they don't have discretion at the Platte level, they're, they're making recommendations because part of their job too is to look at the subdivision code and say, this isn't working.
Thank you, sir. Once again, I ask for a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dawn.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Gene.
Yes.
Tim.
No.
Amber. Yes. Arthur.
Yes.
Moving on down to item five, approval of city council minutes for August second, twenty twenty-one. Hopefully you've had plenty of time to review during our discussions.
I've got a question about this one, too. I noticed that something new that, that I suspect should have been here all along, where we've got ordinances that are, we see whether they fail or pass, and then we see the individual votes of each of the council members. I don't see that on, on every one of these approvals, and so I'm curious.
On your voting?
Yes.
Yeah, whenever you guys vote, no, I put that person on there and the rest of them are yes. And if it, if it says, you know, motion to approve and say you voted no, then everybody else voted yes, then I would put your name and said vote to no.
Okay, so like.
So they're aware that everybody voted yes.
Okay, so like an item B where it says approval of a conditional use permit for Eco Vista. Arthur, depends on motion to approve, second by Amber, motion passes. Is that because all six of us voted yes on that?
No, I think that one had to be, everybody had to be, know everybody's vote. Had to be written for, for that.
But that one's not, is it? That's, again, that's B, approval of a conditional use permit for Eco Vista. It just, it does not have the listing. That's part of my concern. I understand that, I understand that could be tedious, but I also understand for the, for the record, it's probably important.
For the record, just those right there had to be individual noted for the votes. The rest of them did not have to be.
Okay. And, and then how do we know which ones are and which ones are not? Or how do you know that, I guess, I should say? And I appreciate it. I'm sorry I made an error.
What was the question again?
How do we know? How do you know? Sorry, because I don't know, but I'd like to know. But how does one know what gets listed and what does not get listed? So again, like on that one, I'm just looking at item B as an example. It says that Arthur motion to approve. It says that Arthur motion approved, Amber seconded it, and the motion passes, how would I know that that one?
Because no one said, but no.
Okay, that's why.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense then.
Yeah.
And then on C, that table, was that, everybody voted to table that?
Yes, because no one voted no.
Okay, wonderful, um, okay, that, then that, that helps me get that, thank you very much, I appreciate that. And I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Now then, moving on down to item six, this is comments from citizens, if you'd like to speak, please step up to the podium. Uh, keep your comments to three minutes or less and state your name and address, please, Ms. Russell? No? Okay, thank you.
Mark Calcagni, twelve, six forty-two Arbor Acres Road. Um, mayor asked me to come today to ask for the council's. Uh, allocation of funds for a, either an independent study for air quality. And hoping that you will, you will grant that, you know, for that reason.
What's the request, Mr. Calcagni?
The request is for independent air quality specialists, I'm, I'm uh, on the committee that. Uh, we're forming to uh, have an air quality committee. And it's for air quality specialists to, um, independent specialists to determine the air quality around the landfill, sorry. I didn't say lamp, I figured you assumed it would know what I was talking about.
I understand it, and, and their, their request is, is what?
I haven't made a formal request yet, it's in your agenda packet, so it's coming down the line, and I asked Mr. Calcagni to come and, come and be supportive of, of this.
And I'm supportive of that.
It's always good to see you, Mr. Calcagni, thanks for being here.
I'm just kind of shaking my head because I can't believe we, as a city, are not listening to the citizens and my hope is that. Uh, the city does and Waste Management does what they're say they're going to do. You know, with respect to the health, safety and environment, thank you.
Mr. Calcagni? Sorry, out of curiosity, did, did you know whether or not that vote was going to come to city council, were you under the impression?
I did not, and then I was part of the work session and did not hear, and I did not hear that city council would not. Vote on it, that was not stated in that meeting, I guess we could look back to the tape of that, you know.
There, there is no tape of that, Mark, that's part of my drive. Is there, where can I find that, Mr. Clinton? I'm sorry, and where do I find that, Mr. Clinton? Super, thank you, appreciate that, Mr. Calcagni, apparently you can find it online.
And if you don't mind, Mr. Burris, please refrain from trying to take over the council meetings.
Oh, sir, I'm so sorry, am I not allowed to address?
No, no, sir, you're not.
Oh, okay.
All right, anybody else? Okay, moving on down, uh, item seven, approval of city council members to waive the three reading rule for all ordinances on the agenda. If there is any, I don't know if there is any, is there? Uh, is there is a rezoning ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
A motion of second, roll call, please.
Don?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Tim?
No.
Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Moving down, number nine, this nine A, acceptance of a bill of assurance, Mr. Aitman, if you would, please.
Councilman, next item is a rezoning uh, ordinance in which a bill of assurance is. Uh, attached with that, a bill of assurance is a restriction that's offered by an applicant uh, for either development or rezoning. It runs with the land, it's filed in the real estate records. Uh, in this case, my understanding is that there was a discussion at the planning commission level. Um, uh, with some concerns raised uh, with the zoning uh, and bill of assurance was um, was spoken about. Um, I was asked to help prepare one uh, with the applicant. Uh, so I provided the applicant a form and the applicant has uh, uh, signed it, it was confirmed uh, by. Um, by the city planner, um, is the applicant here?
Yes, Mr. Luntch.
Okay, and basically what I, I just would like to do is to confirm that uh, it's being offered voluntarily uh, by the. Uh, by the applicant before you consider the rezoning ordinance, which is the next item. Sir, you're, you're, you're offering the bill of assurance, okay, okay.
Thank you, sir. So. I would ask a, for a motion to accept. Said bill of assurance.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Arthur?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Tim?
I'm so sorry, uh, you said motion, uh, or if we were going to discuss it, I had my hand raised, I wanted to make sure that I could get called on. Is it too late to make a?
No, I don't mind at all, sir.
Okay, uh, my concern with this particular project is simply the, uh, the way we're packing in those, um. Uh, those houses, I, I understand where this is only to add another four. Um, but I am not crazy about the idea, I don't know if anybody else feels that way or not about this particular project.
Okay, been around long, start the vote over, please. Start the vote over, please.
Arthur?
This is for acceptance of the bill assurance.
Revoting on this?
The bill of assurance.
The same one.
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Tim?
No.
Don?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Moving down to nine B. Mr. Aitman?
City town, excuse me, city town in Washington County, Arkansas, an ordinance rezoning approximately nineteen point eight seven acres of real property located at six, six four Kelly Avenue. Within city limits of Tintown, Arkansas, from R three residential to R four residential.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Rocky. How did everybody on the planning commission vote on this?
Except for one. I think it was.
Okay.
Was it, was it two no's or one no? I guess one, I seen Joshua, yes. We can review, but. Okay, four two. I thought you said Josh. And we both don't know, okay, it passed.
Okay.
Okay, we can review it, though. Okay? Anybody else? Call the roll, please.
Amber?
Yes.
Tim?
No.
Gene?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on down to nine C, uh, my apologies, millage is spelled incorrectly on here, but this is approval of the. Three point five millage that we pushed forward from. The cow that we will have to uh, turn into Washington County so they can put it up for their vote, I think it's in November is when they pass all the millages. So motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Did you say two point five?
Three point five, same as last year. Same as last year, sir. Roll call.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Larry? Arthur?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Moving on down, this is uh, item number ninety. Council, Mr. Calcagni, uh, came before you this evening, uh, because basically, uh, in my mind, um. His family to me was, um, really the most vocal. Um, of folks that I got to talk to during the whole process of the landfill, among others, I mean, there were several others, I don't want to single out the Calcagnys at all on this. Um, but their concerns were, you know, that the air quality uh, surrounding uh, Eco Vista landfill was. Uh, not of their liking and it felt like that there was more there there than where ADQ is possibly seen. Um, so at the, during talks of all the landfill discussion, um, you know, we came up with an idea that, you know. Whatever happened in this game, uh, that we would try to uh, see what we could do as a city uh, to help our citizens out. Um, so I spoke with the Calcagnys quite a bit about this. Um, and even during the workshop session and everything, but um, you know, it was, it was. Whether it's my brainchild or not, I don't want to accept any kind of credit for it because it's actually the citizens that were, that were crying the most for this. Um, but what I told them I would do is I would come before you, the council, uh, to look at uh, amending your budget. Uh, once we find out, if we can find out a company that we could be allowed to put out for RFQs. Um, to find a, an air quality specialist, if you will, to go out and conduct random sampling of the landfill. Um, and doing such, I told Mr. Calcagni that I was respectfully asked that he would be on a uh, a steering committee, if you will. Along with Ms. Penny Baskin, um, and I'd like to pick one other person to be on it also, uh, to be a part of this group. And mainly because I want to give them the assurance that it wasn't just somebody that this body picked, it was, you know, a, a friend of, of Tonnie Town that. Could possibly pad the numbers or anything, but um, you know, in doing so, uh, I reached back out to Ms. Courtney McNair. Uh, to speak back to the Arkansas Health Department, and I was trying to find the email that she sent me. Uh, but the letter and what's in your packet, uh, I was elated to see this this last week. Uh, because it's the first time, from my knowledge, that um. The ADH is, is willing to go above, and above board in this case. And basically what they've said in this letter that, um, if in fact the, the specialist is hired by the city of Tonnie Town. And uh, there's any findings whatsoever, uh, that the city of Tonnie Town is, uh, will need to push this information forward to ADH. Uh, and upon doing so, uh, they will conduct a public health survey. Or study, if you will, of any findings that we might find. Um, so I, you know, I look at it too, is, you know, we, we could probably possibly use. This type of system, not just in, in, in the landfill areas, but there are other sectors in town that. You know, we may have concerns with or may not have concerns with, but it might be something that we could utilize throughout the city a little bit, so. Anyway, I, I respectfully ask, uh, that you allow me to put out for an RFQ. Um, to find, first of all, companies that actually do this and conduct these studies. And then from there, I would like to have this uh, steering committee uh, assist me in, in making a selection. Uh, for a company to work on behalf of the city to do this, so that is my request to you this evening.
What kind of hours are you talking about somebody putting in and what kind of money are we talking about?
Uh, Mr. Down, truthfully, I don't know the answer to that because um, I don't know enough to be dangerous about. Air quality studies, I know that, um, you know, I've sold some real estate in the past. Uh, where mold was an issue and, and we had to hire, you know, an independent company to come in and, and check the home for black mold, obviously. Um, I think the, the times that I've had that done in real estate. You know, cost me somewhere around seven hundred to a thousand dollars for those tests, but to go out and go in the field and do random studies, I, I don't know the answer. Uh, as what they charge, uh, but I can sure find out for you, but at this time, what I'd like to do. Is take one step at a time and put out the RFQs to, one, find out who all does this. Um, and then come back before you, after a selection is made, uh, to get approval once again, um. To hire said company, uh, because obviously my spending limit is, is that capped at twenty thousand and also, uh, all contracts. That we have over a certain amount and a certain year amount had to be ratified by you, the council as well, so. That's what I'm asking to do at this time is to, to put out RFQs to take that first step, to see who we can find.
I'd make a motion for that process.
I'll second that.
And, thank you.
And why wouldn't the, the dump pay for that, why, why are we paying for that, or did we already lose all of our negotiating power when we approved last week?
I don't think it has anything to do really so much about requirement of, of the landfill to pay it because. You know, we're the ones that are thinking that there might be more to it. Um, so the onus is really on us, I think, at this time to prove that. And not for the landfill to disprove, I think, because they have tests conducted red, almost golly, for the past two months, they've had nine inspections by. ADH that have all passed, so, you know, they have proven their salt, I guess, if you will, in inspections that ADH has already conducted on them. Otherwise, they would have already had permits pulled, so.
So I'm trying to wrap my brain around what you just said.
Sure.
You said, we are the ones who have concerns about the air quality, and so we ought to be the ones to pay for it.
These citizens are the ones that have concern, and what I am trying to do is my level best to help our citizens in this case.
Okay. I suppose I understand that to some extent, I just, I think we have ignored them up to now, and I feel like it's throwing a bone that is going to cost the city some money. Um, I suppose having somebody do it is better than having nobody do it, but I'd rather the dump be the ones, since they are the cause, if, if it exists. That they would pay for it. Um, do you believe that you could negotiate something like that with the powers that be over at Waste Management?
Negotiate what, sir?
That they would pay for air quality tests that were independent, that they'd pay for it, but they have no access to the data.
So you want me to go to the landfill and ask them to pay for testing and not receive no data, is what you just said?
Yeah.
Okay. I can ask.
Super. I'd love that.
Sure, so the motion's on the table to let me go forward with an RFQ. Any other discussions? Roll call, please.
Don?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Tim?
No.
Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Moving down, nine E, Mr. Burris, this is your name on it.
Super. Um, I've heard from several citizens who have simply asked that this petition be put into the public record. I recognize that after I asked for that, that somebody, I suspect the mayor. Asked an employee to run through it and do some, uh, some work on the petition, so I want to, I want to read that. Uh, there were handwritten signatures, uh. There are roughly eleven hundred signatures, I believe, on here. Apparently, two hundred and thirty-three of those have addresses that are not listed in the Tonnie Town city limits, is that in the planning area, mayor, or is that? Completely outside the planning area? Do you know?
Um, Leslie printed or made your report that's in your packet?
That, that's what I'm looking at.
Yes, sir.
It says address listed not in Tonnie Town city limits, I'm wondering if that's.
Yeah, those are the, uh, the handwritten signatures that were turned in to us. Um, the addresses listed not in Tonnie Town city limits were two hundred and thirty-three. Addresses listed in Tonnie Town city limits were five hundred and thirty-one. Unable to determine due to legible P O boxes listed or addresses were not shown, these just were forty-two. Total handwritten signatures was eight oh six. Typed signatures, which was a part of the list of that you submitted to us, Mr. Burris. On the typed signatures on the city.
Sir, I didn't submit that.
You brought it to us.
That was something that, that was listed to me.
Having a seven two seven oh four zip code could be put in Tonnie Town city limits or Fayetteville city limits. Having seventy seven sixty codes could be put on Tonnie Town city limits, so, or Springdale. Without the full address, there is no way to determine if these individuals are within our city limits or not. So city zip listed in Tonnie Town eighty-seven, city zip listed in Tonnie Town eleven. Cannot determine one oh eight, total typed signatures two oh six, and per the last census, Tonnie Town's population was forty-three hundred one. That would put this petition having the support of twelve point six oh for the citizens of which. This petition says Tonnie Town citizens advocating for a safer environment. So merely while we wanted to make sure, because the citizens did request that this petition be entered into some record. So we wanted to validate, if you will, somewhat of these signatures.
So is that now entered into a record?
It is in your packet.
I understand that.
And I just read it off.
But is it in recording?
And we have given this data to our recorder treasure, quarter treasure.
Recorder treasure, does this somehow get recorded into a file somewhere? That a citizen could access if they wanted to see?
If you want this on the website, we can put it on the website.
I would love that, when I asked for that earlier, I was told that couldn't happen, I appreciate that.
I know that you were told it couldn't happen because of the phone numbers that were listed on here, which we redacted.
Now that the phone numbers and stuff are blocked out, then we can do that.
Super, great, appreciate that, I know that the city attorney had some concerns about that as well, so I appreciate you guys finding a way through that. Super, so, um, uh, again, my question was, address listed not in Tonnie Town city limits, the two thirty-three. Are those then, Mr. Mayor? Uh, in our planning area, or are they not in the planning area?
Um, there were several, um, signatures that we found. There were several signatures that we found that were really basically all over the globe, if you will. Signatures from Iceland, signatures from Albuquerque, New Mexico, so I'm, I'm happy to assume that as part of the two thirty-three, it was a mix.
So you do believe that some of that two thirty-three, they are inside the Tiny Town planning zone, planning area? But outside the city limits, is that correct?
I can only address that what she counted as far as inside the city limits, sir. And knowing that some of these signatures, especially on a type page, does not give us any address, that's hard to determine. We might ask the people that wrote the petition where they came from, if they witnessed them, and ask them where they were from, sir.
Well, I know this wasn't a legal petition. I don't think that was the point. I think the point was that there are citizens who wanted to make known their displeasure. And frankly, if your number's correct, that twelve point six percent of our Tiny Town citizens took the time to put their name, signature, address, and phone number on this form, I, I just think it's the sort of thing that ought to be recorded. And the only reason why I asked at all was because I keep hearing from citizens that they're getting the runaround and that although it was given to this office some time ago, as far as they knew, it was not recorded. So if we could have a link, Ron, that's up on the website, the web link for these, this agenda item, that would be super.
I think there's already a link.
I thought maybe we could put it on the minutes and agenda. Where they go in on tonight's deal where everything is there. That would be, I think, a better place.
I think that'd be great. Sure. I'm fine with it.
Was it, was it on there?
Glad to hear it.
Okay. Well, if it is, then that's great.
Wonderful. Then, then that was my intent, was that it get recorded. And so those of you out there that have asked, there you go. Thank you for your time.
Moving on down, item nine F. Counsel, this is proven of adding the administrative assistant to the mayor, Elizabeth Bohannon, as an authorized signer on all operating bank accounts. All of the administrative assistants that we've had in the past have been added to the account. So once again, I'd like to add her to our checking accounts for signature.
Make that motion.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Discussion?
Who do we have on there, signatures for these accounts?
Ah, let's see, myself.
Me, Arthur, Larry.
Larry.
Amber.
Amber.
Outside of this office. Inside the office would be you and.
I'm the only one inside that.
Yeah.
Leslie can't sign yet.
Well, if she gets approved, then that would be two.
Yep.
And you're.
Then that way, if someone is sick or whatever and can't make it, then at least we have.
Sure.
One here.
And the previous admin was removed, I, I assume, when they left.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
All right. Moving on down, comments from Alderman. Mr. Burris?
I get to start?
Yeah.
You, you, you may have picked up on the fact that I'm a little annoyed. This isn't the first time I've been annoyed, won't be the last time that I've been annoyed. I feel that a lot of things get sort of shuffled around, and perhaps that's legal and perhaps it's not. But I know, and I've been able to get some corroboration, that there are department heads of yours that have made threats to citizens. There are department heads, I'm sorry, there are waste management officials who have used the specter of department heads to threaten others, including planning commissioners. I understand that I can't even get Mr. Reichman to write a resolution the way I ask him to. And, and when he returns my calls, if he returns my calls, the, those don't always work out the way that I hoped. So I feel that even though I am on city council, I feel that my voice and my ability to try to make any change here is severely limited. So perhaps we also need to make a resolution that the city council is disbanded, since it appears that you and Mr. Reichman can handle everything pretty well on your own. Maybe that's a conversation for another day. But here's what I can say, and here's what I feel with all my being. I feel that especially over the last several months here, that the administrator of this town, namely the mayor, has acted in a way that is unbecoming. And, and I think it's a shame. I think our citizens expect more, and I believe they deserve more. And I've told you, Mr. Mayor, I think you're a very, very skilled politician. I think you're a very smart fellow. And I think you've done some good for this place, and I think you could be a great mayor. I don't think you are, but I think you could be. And I hope that somehow you'll find deep inside yourself the ability to serve the people, to allow your council to represent the people that we have been elected to serve. And, and I hope you'll do likewise. I'm also looking forward to the day that as a first-class city, we can elect a, a city attorney who lives in Tiny Town. I think that'll be good for the city. And with that, I'll end my comments.
Ah, let's see, which should I pick? On the far end, Larry?
And the only, the only real thing I have, I was going to say, you know, that there's enough contentious stuff going on out in the world that we didn't need it. Nine eleven's coming up, which, you know, kind of brings that to my mind, but I'm sorry the way things occurred tonight. But I guess more than anything, I'm just, I'm just going to say, be aware, you know, that, that even though we do agree to disagree, at times we really agree to disagree. But we are in the USA, and we, at least we get to say what we think. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Larry.
Amber?
I really appreciate being on city council. It's a really great opportunity to, to serve the city that I love. I am disappointed at times. I do think things could probably be done better, and I did not know about that vote, but I will take the blame myself that I did not understand. But anyway, I do love Tiny Town, and I know that even though, as Larry said, we can agree to disagree at times, that we all have Tiny Town's best interest in mind. So that's it.
Arthur?
Yep. I'm not going to say anything. I think there's been enough said and enough heard, enough hurt feelings. So. I like, I better keep my mouth shut. Thank you.
Mr. Downey?
Tell everybody to keep supporting the farmer's market. But all I got tonight, thank you.
Gene?
You know, I've only got a, a single comment for tonight, and I feel that our council has, has acted unprofessionally tonight and could be handled much more professionally and businesslike. And hopefully our next council meetings will be a little more professional. Thank you.
All right. Moving down to me. First of all, I want to hope that everybody had an absolutely terrific Labor Day weekend. I sent out a post on Facebook, and I truly meant it, that, you know, at these times, that we really, really need to think about our city employees. Because those cats are not taking the breaks that we're taking. Your water department is answering calls on water leaks and coming in and then doing their thing when they would like to be home with their family as well, but yet they're on duty. Your, your police officers, you see them rolling about town, they don't take the holiday off because they're on schedule to do so. Your fire department continues to serve. Your ambulance that services the whole community of Washington County is always there at a nine-one-one call. So, you know, if you get a chance and you, and you come into city hall and you see those employees, you know, we put out a survey study, a salary study for you guys to be looking at. And we're going to be putting out some budgets here shortly. I really want you to consider what your city employees do that actually make this city run. I mean, we can sit up here on our high horses and on our bench and enact laws and argue about this or argue about that. But the true unsung heroes of this town are your city employees, and, and they should be considered your number one asset when you're thinking about monies and everything going forward. So, you know, I want to say thank you to them because they, they, they put their heart and soul into this town as much as we do. You know, also, I put together another little post about hazardous mitigation grant that we made application for. I don't know if you guys are aware of it or not, but we actually got it accepted. And what this really is doing for us is, I came before you several months ago, that we had some flood issues in Barrington Heights, some storm waters that came through, and, you know, my staff worked diligently trying to find assistance for these folks through contacting the county judge and contacting other cities. I made several phone calls to other mayors to try to determine if, if they had an impact in their town by these floodwaters. And apparently this particular flood was isolated to an area that just flooded that particular part of Tiny Town and caused these families issues in that area. So there was no question that we could apply for any kind of FEMA funding because we didn't meet a certain threshold of losses. So, you know, as, as a last ditch effort for us, we made application for this hazardous mitigation grant, which we got accepted for three hundred thousand dollars. Which, by the way, you guys thankfully approved, and I addressed that in my comments on Facebook of my appreciation for you guys coming to bat of offering the sum seventy thousand dollars to help us clean that ditch out. At this time, to kind of give you an update about it, I've held fifty thousand dollars. And the reason why I've held that fifty thousand is because we, it became apparent that the other areas that we were going to have to work within was going to require us to get easements to go on these properties. Also, we're going to be required to seek special permitting through the Corps of Engineers and elsewhere to be able to step foot in those properties. And also, I was kind of waiting to see if we got this grant, because it's a seventy-five, twenty-five grant is how it works. So we're going to receive two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to go towards these projects. And then we got to match the additional funding for it. So, you know, we're going to be a little bit short, holding the fifty thousand. I'm still going to need a little bit of change to finish off everything. But our intent is to first work on, on the bridge that's going across Barrington, because it only has two whistles that's in it. And it's became our determination that that is a choke point that is backing these, these floodwaters up when they, when they fall at a five-hundred-year flood rate at the time. So I've already notified the neighbors down there that we received this grant, and that as soon as we get all the permits and everything in line, that we're going to go back to work on it. Because, you know, it's not going to be long. I mean, I know it's, you know, September, but March rains come pretty quick. So, you know, I hope so, is that we get to work on it sooner than later, after we get all of our permitting and start trying to make it a little better Tiny Town in that area. So I want to keep you updated on that. Also, you know, back several months ago, we had discussions on Fletcher Road project. And it became kind of heated in here a little bit between a couple of my aldermen, this Amber Abara and Jean McCartney, about sidewalks and schools. So again, I'm tickled to tell you about a portion of the sidewalks, and now even a bike trail is going to be installed with Mr. Mathias is building a new building over there, and he's been agreeable with us on, on some of the things that we're asking. In case you didn't know, he donated a section of his property to bring Fletcher Road into the industrial park. They, they gave us to help him out and others in the community. And now he has since come forward and is going to build a bike path and sidewalk. And I, and I tell you that because there's a grant coming up that's called a Safer to School Grant that we're looking at applying for. And what the, the grant is purpose is to make it safer for children to be able to bike and, and walk to school with. So, you know, we hope to make application for it pretty soon. And I don't know how much their funding is for, but we'd like to try to put, you know, some more sidewalks in the ground to be able to let people get to school. And, and it's thinking about it a little bit. I talked to Northwest Regional Planning this last week. Because, you know, after visiting with folks in this town and, and listening to all of you, and I don't know how you feel about it, but it sure feels like to me, and maybe I'm wrong, but we got two different towns in Tiny Town. And it's divided by a highway, Highway four twelve. And you can really tell that there's a difference in the feel of this town. Because I can tell you, I talked to one of my aldermen the other day about it just a little bit, and I said, you know, we've had several subdivisions come in on the north side of the highway, and we've had apartment complexes come in on the north side of the highway. And on those additions that's came in on the north side, and I want you all to kind of think about it, we didn't have any complaints hardly. But anybody come forward and then say the traffic is too much, or we don't need to build this here, or this doesn't fit. But yet, anything that is built on the south side of four twelve or done, it seems like every single project has had somebody that's a naysayer. So to me, it kind of gives you a little bit of an inkling of a different feel or a different thought process from north to south. And not that there's anything wrong with that at all. I don't disagree with it. The people can have their opinions. But one of the things I talked to Northwest Regional about was a tap grant that they have in which I'm going to try to make application, if I can get the time to do so, to put a skybridge in this town. Or a tunnel, whichever one that we can qualify for, that will actually connect the two towns together. The idea is, is putting it right here at city hall and then talking to the church about connecting it over to where they're going to build a new worship center on the corner and bringing that skybridge over to where kids from the north side that are going to school over here, that want to ride their bikes or walk, will have to play Frogger to go across the highway. Another thought is, is you sit and look at the great festival every year, and my police officers do a fabulous job, but they have to get permits to be out there. They have to get staffing to be out there. We bought two light towers, put gas and fuel them, and stuck people out there in the middle of the road trying to get them hit. Wouldn't it be a great addition to Tiny Town to have a skybridge or a tunnel? Also, it kind of gives a sense of branding in your town if we were to bring something there, but I have checked a little bit. And the cost is going to be somewhere in nine hundred thousand dollars to build such an animal. So I'm going to seek some grant help, maybe if we can push that forward. So anyway, just trying to plant a seed for y'all. The other thing I'd like to discuss with you, I've reached out to Mr. Burris. It's on the census tract. You know, I was given information early on in the census that it was felt to believe that our town was going to be somewhere around six thousand people. When the actual census tract came out a few weeks ago, it was determined that Tiny Town is forty-three oh one is what their data is going to reflect. When basically they ratify the census here in a few months. And the reason why I reached out to Mr. Burris is because I felt like that he was the person on this council that I felt like would dedicate time into giving ideas and research to determine whether this census is true and accurate. Now, what makes me believe it's not true, you might ask, is, you know, when I go back and I review how many water taps we have in this town. Currently, Mr. Clark, how many is our water tap? Okay, well, I said nineteen hundred the other day, so he's saying twenty-one hundred today. Okay? I also know that a good portion of this town, Reed Valley, Steel Road, if you take a marker and go around our city, it's taken out by Washington Water Authority that carries those water taps. So we're not even including all of those folks in the water taps. So, you know, the health department numbers are averages, what, James, two point three people per household? So if I figure two point three people at twenty-one hundred, then I'm already over the four thousand mark, just with the water taps that I have. And not to mention, Amber, I think you know this as well as I do, that your brother, whenever we worked out the agreements for all the apartment complexes, we put each unit on one tap. And there's how many units per unit, or how many houses per unit is in those twelve? No, I'm saying in each unit, there's what, nine? Twenty-four or twelve, but they're only on one tap. So if you start breaking all those pieces down, it sure feels like to me that the numbers aren't accurate. So what I've done is, once again, I've reached out to Mr. Burris for his assistance in helping me discover what we can do and how we can do it. But to kind of give you guys a ballpark idea of what the reality of this is, the census only comes around every ten years, and we receive what's called state turnback money and county turnback money. Well, the difference between forty-three oh one and six thousand, just on the state level, is a hundred and thirty thousand dollar state level turnback. Multiply that by ten, one point three million dollars. Now, we're not even talking about the county money. But the issue is. But the issue is, is it's, I've been talking to all these people, and they're telling me how tough it is to get the census to overturn their numbers or to be forced to overturn their numbers. So the next greatest thing is you can do what's called a special census, which costs your city around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But when doing so, you lose, you don't even get the opportunity to ever get the county turnback money funding. But if you do win in the case and they do raise it, then you have the possibility of getting the federal turnback money. The only drawbacks to this scenario is they only allow you to do this special census, I think, in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. So you're going to lose a couple of years in the process, and I don't know if they retroact the money or not. That's why I'm asking Mr. Burris to help me out with this, to try to figure out what's the riddle to getting some help, because I don't know how you guys feel about it, but one point three million dollars is a whole lot of money to be playing with in this town. And even if the county turnback money funding is a half a million, you know, we're talking about two million dollars possibly for this town over a ten-year period. So do I think it's important that we find out? Yes, I do. Do I need some help finding out? Yes, I do. There's lots and lots of towns that are putting their names on lists that they too feel like there's an issue with how the census was tracked. I understand that it's the first time that they've ever done a blocking-type tracking system where they're not actually knocking on doors. They're taking blocks, and they're not accurate. Now, they're going to blame it on, we sent out pamphlets, and you should have sent the pamphlet back. Well, okay, I can't make people send pamphlets back either. But anyway, I volunteered, I've talked to, uh, Mr. Womack's office, uh, his assistant, that he said that he's going to see what he can to find out information from the folks down Little Rock and the like, and we've talked to Northwest Regional Planning about it. We phoned John Bozeman's office to get assistance with no turnback call. I have talked to your state representative, uh, Robin Lundstrom about this. So, you know, I'm still putting out feelers, trying to figure out what we can do with this, and maybe there's nothing we can do. But I feel like I owe it to the citizens of this town, and especially the city that doesn't receive a lot of tax base in the first place, and everything's going up. So anyway, just to tell you where I'm at in that, in that deal. Next on my list. Uh, let's see. Still working on the stoplight. We've called, we've called, we've called, uh, another mayor that I know of has finally sent a letter to the state that if the state doesn't start to work on his stoplight, then he's requesting that he hire his own people to get it done. Uh, I once again talked to Northwest Regional Planning, where we're receiving this grant from, Mr. Tim Conklin, uh, and basically told him that I'm of the same mind, that if they can't get off their tails after a year and four months, uh, with having this grant funding available to them, then maybe we need to start to work on this ourselves and get it going, because we do have, uh, Penalto Road that has now been warranted for a stoplight that I haven't even begun to try to work on, because we can't seem to get Clint's Road done. Also, we do have as part of a warrant study, Harmon Road, uh, that we've asked for for several years too, but I've yet to ask for it again to be studied, because I still feel like that's a dangerous hump right there at Harmon Road that we've had some fatalities at in the past. So just to kind of give you where I'm at. Uh, special elections, special election. In case you haven't forgot about it and your council hasn't told you about it, October twelfth is going to be a special election for the bond issue. In case you don't know about it, the bond issue is for us to restructure our bond, uh, that we currently have in the city, and this is not and will not be an increase in your sales tax or property tax dollars at all. Uh, this is a one-cent sales tax. It is a forever tax in our town, that we felt like the need on this council, uh, due to interest rates being as low as they are, uh, that we take advantage of the situation and, and do a lot to add infrastructure to our town through sewer projects and water projects, and also, uh, to build a new fire station back there in the back where we bought the property on Bandini. So get out to everybody about it. We, uh, started making flyers for it, uh, today. Getting those approved, uh, by our city attorney's office and bond council's office before I print them out. Otherwise, I'd had them here for you tonight, but I want to make sure they approved of them before I sent them out. I posted it front of it on our city Facebook page, if you'd like to see what it looks like. But, uh, tell your friends, tell your neighbors, get out and vote, get out and vote. Folks, that's all I have. Mr. Attorney, do you have anything, sir? Would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you all very much.